All right, this time I'd like to reconvene the meeting. We all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, we'll begin our meeting by approving the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Carrie, second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, at this point, I want to have Dr. Calvin recognize the Science Olympiad kids so they can leave if they'd like to after that, or stick around and learn about the Board of Education. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. So tonight, we want to start our meeting out by recognizing our Science Olympiad team. The 2017-18 Division B Middle School Science Olympiad team has had a really tremendous year this year. Building upon a strong year last year, this team began right away in September to prepare for their competitions. This early start and countless hours into the evenings preparing certainly has paid off. The team kicked started their competition season with a strong showing at the Cornell Invitationals. And then shortly thereafter, they traveled to St. John Fisher for the regional competition, and there they also cleaned house, finishing with an impressive second place overall and earning a bid to the state competition. Just for perspective, each year about 300 teams statewide compete in this regional competition, vying for a limited number of spots at the state competition. This team worked hard after the regionals to prepare for the states and came in an impressive 10th place out of the 40 schools that were represented. And during this competition, 10 of our students medaled in seven different events, and you see some of the medals on some of the students tonight. We are incredibly proud of their accomplishments, the accomplishments of this team, and look forward to seeing these students continue with the success in the future. So we want to make sure that we say congratulations to all of you all on an outstanding season. So Mr. Demas is here, and he's going to read the names of all the students, and maybe students, once he calls your name, if you can just stand for us and just let us see who you are. And after we see who you are, we'd like to certainly recognize you, and then we just want to take a great picture, if that's okay. So Mr. Demas, if you can maybe use the microphone here so that people who are on camera can hear it as well, and we'll go from there.
All right, I will read the names of everybody on the team, and for those of you when your name is called, for the state representative team, just stand up for us. Isabella Anisi, Anthony Ansamo, Anthony Blood, Josie Kaya, John Curtis Brayley, Owen Doran, Sean Doran, Emma Gabriel, Dylan Gervin, Emma Gordon, Daniel Graff, Jeffrey Griffo, Gina Hoffman, Reina Hoffman, Cody Jackson, Maddie Jasek, Annika Landrigan, Zach Lasher, Alexandria Miller, Connor Miller, Daniel Noon, Andrew Rook, Daniel Rook, Ashley Seitzer, Cody Smith, Shelby Thorne, Anaya Torres, and Emma Van Bordel. And our coaches, head coach Stephanie Cornell, Molly Van Orman, Janice Becker, and our outside of the school district helpers, Mr. Brown and Mr. Courier. So that is our team. These are the state reps here, and you see all the medals. We're very, very proud of your accomplishments this year. So we save the best for last. You guys did a great job this season. We're looking forward to a lot more accomplishments in the future. So congratulations.
So we're going to just take a picture with the kids, and I'm going to go over with Mr. Demas, and if there's any board members who would like to join us for a quick second, we just want to get a picture with the kids. Okay? All right?
Okay, we'll continue our meeting. At this time, we'll start public comment. Reminder, this meeting is held in public. According to open meetings law, it's not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value input from the public. Please direct your comments to the Board of Education. We ask you start your, that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-minute mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. At this time, if anybody would like to, any community members would like to speak, please come to the table and use the microphone and state your name and address for the board clerk's record. At this time, do we have anybody who would like to speak?
Do I have to turn it on? Is it on? Okay. Okay. Dear Board, my name is Beth Peters. I am a school counselor at Freewill Elementary School. And my role in this district as a school counselor is to look out for the well-being of students, families, and staff. Today was really a day full of unexpected twists, but it was not because of Freewill closing. Actually, Freewill students and staff celebrated the closing of an era with dry eyes and smiles on our faces. Today, teachers across the district have been in their classrooms to do what needs to be done, the arduous task of packing for district-wide restructuring. We assume, the staff assumes that you are all aware of Greg's letter that went out to staff on May 5th before any terms were negotiated with WTA regarding moving to a new building. It states that staff changing building locations will be provided for two paid days to pack and two paid days to unpack. In this letter, we were instructed to plan accordingly based on the timeframe specified for next week. So staff did. They rescheduled vacations, they hired childcare, and they've been cleaning out in preparation for packing as instructed. Since no rate of compensation was specified in that letter, we assumed that we were being paid our contractual rate. And one question we have is, when is it ever okay to require people to work beyond their contract and not tell them what they would be compensated or how, or to negotiate that with the WTA? Because administration failed to follow proper protocol and negotiate the moving and compensation requirements with the WTA, the WTA called them to task on this. A hastily crafted MOA was presented to negotiators yesterday afternoon, and imagine staff's surprise when WTA notified members today that this MOA was found to be inequitable and not acceptable for our members. In good faith, WTA negotiators proposed to revise MOA to seek more equitable agreement. At this hour, I personally am unclear where we stand with regards to the district's response to a more equitable and fair memorandum of agreement. We are left wondering if this district follows protocols and proper practices, if it keeps promises, if it negotiates in good faith. It's the night before our last contractual day for WTA members. Effective members need to know if the district is negotiating in good faith and will agree to a more equitable MOA so that we will be able to complete our job, or if tomorrow is our last contractual day. There is still time, and we are hopeful that this administration will make this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak?
Daniel Wood, 4309 West Walworth Road. In reviewing the board packet tonight, I find issues with the proposal to extend the superintendent's contract. He's been in this district for two years, and as a taxpayer, I have seen no benefit. He talked eight of you into closing his school, and now my taxes are raised. His administration is now just proposing a budget that breaks even. I think it is premature to extend his contract before the results of these drastic actions take hold. I also find fault with his raises spelled out in detail in Section 9A as to how much he will receive year over year, but with no goals associated to them. Raises should come from achieving goals. How is it that a $9-an-hour fast-food employee has goals that they have to meet in order to get a raise, but a $100-an-hour superintendent doesn't? If the superintendent meets goals that benefit the community and the children, he and his administration should get raises. And if the community feels that he is an asset to the school district, then his contract should be extended. But I see no goals achieved thus far and none spelled out in his contract. The district was approaching fiscal stress, and through some work, he and his administration have now proposed a budget that balances. So why extend his contract early? I think he needs to be held accountable for holding to that budget that he has proposed, and holding on his contract is one way of doing that. If there's no adverse effect of the decisions that have been made this year, then negotiations for his contract extension could be performed next year. Extending his contract right now only benefits him. It does not benefit taxpayers, it does not benefit the board, and it most certainly does not benefit the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Kim Phillips, 5548 Lincoln Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I'm here today to ask you to refrain from extending the superintendent's contract at this point, but to hold off on this decision until the current contract expires next year. As a parent of two students in the district and as a taxpayer, I do have significant concerns about the changes in schedules, programs, and staffing the district is currently undergoing, and I have concerns about the divisiveness that has occurred within our district as a result. I urge you to give the superintendent the opportunity to show us some kind of positive outcome to his vision before committing this district, our students, and all of us as taxpayers to another five years at such a high financial cost, a length of time and cost I'd like to add that is very high compared to comparable districts. And in cases where other superintendents have received such lengthy extensions in compensation, they have had a proven record of success within those districts. Personally, I'd like to see some results, at least in terms of the climate, parent satisfaction, increased teacher and staff support, if not student outcomes themselves, before the board increases our commitment to such lengths. There's really no downside to the students or the community by waiting another year, and it would certainly serve to renew our trust in this board and the superintendent. And I do fear that anything less will be perceived by many as either greed or as a power play and will further divide this community. I do thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Yelena Keeney. I reside at 6157 Le Frank Drive. In the interest of accountability, I would like to propose also that the board members consider delaying an extension to Dr. Calvin's contract in order to give Dr. Calvin an opportunity to enact his vision for our school district. With so many changes happening in such a short period of time, it is incumbent on the Board of Education to thoroughly evaluate Dr. Calvin's ability to plan and execute his vision. As a community, we would like to see the benefits of all these changes and the successful enactment of all these changes prior to rewarding Dr. Calvin's efforts with an extended contract. As a parent of a child entering middle school as a sixth grader, as well as a child entering fourth grade at Wayne Elementary, I continue to have reservations about the cuts to programming, specifically the lack of accelerated math at the sixth-grade level, lack of computer classes at the sixth-grade level, and limited opportunities for enrichment at the fourth-grade level. I am also concerned about the changes to transportation and the lack of organization with parking and transportation at the WO and WE campus. I am very anxious to experience all of the changes that have been implemented at such a terribly fast pace, and I'm hopeful of their success for the sake of my children and all of the children in this district. Board members, please consider delaying Dr. Calvin's extension until, as a community, we can see the success and the benefits Dr. Calvin's vision for our district promised us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ruth Mann, 4343 Downs Road. I would like to echo the comments that you have just heard with a little bit of background. Today, during my lunch hour, I wanted to do a little research because I feel it is vital to know what the statistics are in our area. We are currently, we currently have the third-highest-paid superintendent. The closest school that is in relevance to our numbers, Newark, actually, when I printed it out, it's part of the record, had a base salary of 1,600, I'm sorry, 168,000. So that's quite a difference from the 215 that we're currently looking at. The other two highly-paid, I'm sorry, you guys shaking your head? I can provide this to you. This is a printout. We're looking at the Palmyra Macedon School District was much higher. However, that superintendent has been in that position for 10-plus years. I also went ahead and looked at the averages of New York State for the length of contract. Those averages are reported as well, and usually, a three-year contract is about 60% is the average across New York State. A five-plus-year contract is only awarded 20% of the time when a superintendent has been in that position for five-plus years and has a proven track record. That's what I'm asking for, not anything different than what is across the board in other situations. Once again, we're looking at changes to our school's main focuses. We want to see that all of Dr. Calvin's vision is implemented, and implemented wonderfully, and hopefully that will be the outcome. That's what I'm looking for. But please allow that to be rewarded. Please do not reward a five-year contract with guaranteed raises which has not shown us a proven track record first. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I too would like to ask that you postpone the extension of the contract right now. I attended both the Wayne Elementary and Wayne Primary Parent Information Night, and there was still a lot of questions unanswered. Information we don't have, and everything is, well, we're going to have to wait and see. Well, we're going to have to wait and see. I think that things are rolling far too fast, and I would like to ask that we can slow down. And if everything works as well as you all feel it will, then we can look at it again next year. I don't think there's any need to rush it this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo the sentiments that have already been said. I think that it's prudent for us to wait for the changes that have been made to take place, see what those outcomes are, and if everything turns out in the positive, then I think it's good for us to offer that extension. I am very glad that Dr. Calvin wants to be here for five years. I think that's a good gesture, especially with the changes that have been made. But let's wait and see what happens first, and with a positive outcome of those changes, then let's issue that reward with an extended contract at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time, do we have any board member comments? Pam?
Yeah, I was over at OP yesterday, or two days ago, and talking with one of the teachers, and we both were remarking that we were reading the Sun and Record, and we saw the nice article about, I believe it was SOTUS, where the senior class wears their cap and gowns and they go into the elementary and primary buildings, you know, to talk to the kids and talk about graduating, telling what they're going to be doing. And Don Schalini, the teacher I was talking with, was telling me that she saw it once, where they actually had a sign with their name, and, you know, I'm going to college next year, I'm going to be going to U of R, I'm going to be working, you know, telling what they were going to do. So the kids saw, you know, sometimes their siblings, but the older kids in their caps and gowns, giving them something to aspire to. And I just thought that might be something nice for us to look at here.
Thanks. Anyone else? Ryan?
Business First has released some of the information about the rankings that they do each year in school districts. They've released the names of the top 25 high schools in the Rochester region. There are 86 high schools in the Rochester region. This is based upon four years of test status ending in 2016, with 2016 being weighted four times and 2013 being weighted just once. Wayne Central High School is on that list. Its exact rank is not yet known by me. I ordered the magazine, but much to my chagrin when it came, they did not include the Rochester region this year. So I have to wait until they publish it online. There's one other Wayne County High School on that list. That high school is Marion. So just two Wayne County High Schools made the list of the top 25 high schools in the Rochester region. There are 431 school districts in upstate New York. Business First came out with a list of the 100 best. In the Rochester region, there were 18 schools to make that list. In the Wayne Finger Lakes Boces, there are only four districts on the list: Bloomfield, Canadega, Victor, and Wayne. There were no other Wayne County districts on that list, and this is also based upon four years of test data ending in 2016. When the exact ranks come out, I'll come back to the board, but for now, we know that the high school is listed in the top 25, the districts in the top 100 out of 431 districts upstate. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah, last week, I was at the middle school watching the children do their CO2 cars, and it was pretty interesting. One of the kids' cars fell apart, and he kind of gave up. And rather than just sitting down, Mr. Gauthier told him, "Look, you get in that shop class and you fix it." He did. Got it back together, raced it, ended up finishing third. Quite impressive. Showed this kid never give up. Also, the kids gave me this nice little plaque that they did for me for helping them with the TSA programs. I'll read what it says. It says, "In recognition for sharing your time and expertise with the TC Armstrong Tech Awards, we, the members of the tech team, present Dennis Landry with this token of our appreciation." And they kind of did like a motorcycle on it and called me the paint master because I helped them paint everything. Also, was able to attend the graduation class, was awesome. Was very impressed with our principal. Not only was he chosen as our valedictorian's person of distinction, just about every kid in that school gave him a hug. I mean, that's the kind of dedication that we have in this school, and that's the strength of this school. So I just want my hat's off to Mr. Pollan. That's it.
Oh, one more thing. This is my last board meeting. I just want to thank everybody. Thank the board, thank the parents, thank the staff. By the way, it was really, you deserve a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We love you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis. Carol?
I too went to graduation, and it was a very, it was a very moving celebration, and the kids should be commended. It was nice to see how, without a hitch, it went off. Mrs. Marlowe, you are the tops in my book as far as pronunciation of names because she has it down pat, and everybody that worked really hard to get that there and do their, there's so much behind the scenes that goes into graduation. It's really commendable. Congratulations to all the kids and to Mike Pollan. He does know all those kids, and they were thrilled to receive their diploma and give him a nice hug and thank you. And I know it is our last board meeting of this year, and I just want to personally thank, I know I've done it before, Jeff and Amy for giving up all their evenings to provide the board with all their electronics and all our PowerPoints and everything that we need so we're prepared. And Kathy, thank you again. And that's all.
Thank you, Carol. Jeremy?
Piggybacking on the graduation, one of the things, besides the kids, the relationships you could see, like Dennis mentioned, between the teachers, the amount of scholarships that our kids earned was amazing to me. One of the ones that I personally was very proud of, my nephew got the Jeff Adrienson Memorial Scholarship. One of the things that I'd like to see, and I don't know how they handle this, he had no idea who Jeff Adrienson was, and I went to school with Jeff. I remember when Jeff passed away, I remember, I can picture his face in his blond Mohawk vividly, and we had a lot of conversations about that that day. And especially for the memorial scholarships, I don't know if we do it or if it's something that we possibly might look into in the future. When those kids get those awards, it not just be, here's the scholarship, but here's what it's for, here's what it's, we're remembering the people, and even the ones from companies, what those companies are about, who donated. I think that would be something cool to see, because like I said, he came to me and he's like, Uncle Jay, I got this scholarship, and I have no idea, well, I happen to go to school with him, so let me tell you a little bit about why that scholarship's still going on 30 years, 25 years later, or more. So I just thought that was pretty cool. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, moving along. All right, this time, we'll now ask Dr. Calvin to give us a report to the board.
All right, Board, so just kind of going through here some of the highlights. So today, as you know, was the end of the school year. We had a very smooth day today. Our students did extremely well. Staff also spent some time with some of our parents in parent-teacher conferences this afternoon, and the staff really closed out the school year in a very positive manner. So we're really thankful for the staff and all of the hard work that they did with our students. In terms of our transition report, just want to give you a couple of things, let you know some things that are going on. We have begun work on the new entry into the primary and the elementary buildings. So if you want to kind of share where we're at on that for a little bit, Greg?
Yeah, this week, the county came out and marked out and staked out all the utilities. Typically, from that point, the construction begins within a 10-day period, so I know they have to, they were in the process of ordering some pipe and a culvert, the concrete box, but, you know, things are going according to plan. So we're looking forward to actually seeing the, you know, the actual ground dug up and whatnot, but the staking out of the utilities is the start of the new entry, so we're pleased to see that progress.
Now, in terms of the parking lot work, there's some RFP things that we wanted, do you want to go over that a little bit, Greg?
Yes, with the parking lot, we had to do an additional survey because they wanted to make sure that they got the drainage right. The parking lot extension needs to drain to the east towards the drainage ditch, so they needed an updated survey. We had that completed, and tomorrow I should receive the information for us to go out and do a request for proposals now to actually acquire the services of a contractor to do that work and the extension on the new entryway. We're looking to send that information out on Monday, and we're going to, there'll be a 10-day period for contractors to review that and to respond to the district, which is July 7th. And then we'll be asking the board on July 11th, which is at the end of your retreat day, or on your retreat day, to have a special meeting just to award that RFP so we can get the work going, because we just couldn't do it in time for the reorg meeting, and the August meeting's too late with only two meetings in the summer. But we were able to schedule it so that the boards are here. two meetings in the summer. But we were able to schedule it so that the boards are here. So we'll have those proposals back and reviewed, and a recommendation to you for moving forward with that work.
So while we tried to kind of move this, so we could have it for you here tonight, unfortunately, because we are working with some folks, we're doing some of this for free, the timeframe was moved a little around for us. So we were wondering, again, if it be possible, when we do the board retreat, if we can just have a quick two or three minutes just to accept those RFPs. Would that be all right with the board? Okay? All right, it's already here, that time. All right. Now, just to kind of go over some of the work that's happening in schools. So we are now working through the whole movement piece with our staff. We'll be working over that throughout the entire summer. We have some flooring pieces that we're working through in some of our buildings. So every summer, we go through and look at flooring, and look to see where there are repairs that are needed. We know that we have some terrazzo that needs some repairs, and we've got some people in that have looked at it in one of our buildings. And so we're now working on that terrazzo. We have some carpeting that needs to be updated in some of our schools. This is particularly also in OE. We know there's some carpet in that, that main gathering room, that we kind of want to do some upgrades with around that. Some painting and carpets, again, in other schools. So we'll be certainly working on those items over the summer. We have some playground equipment that I'll show you in just a couple of minutes. At the last meeting, I talked to you a little bit about some of the playground pieces that we want to put in, in the middle school, and over also in OE. OP, excuse me. So in OE, just so you know, we're going to be doing some painting. Painting, you know, goes a long way, basically. And so we'd like to just, on that first level, we're going to do some nice stripes, as you can see at the bottom of the screen. Those are the two main, you know, areas along the two lower wings in the school. So we'll be doing some painting with some nice stripes to kind of match some of the flooring pieces that are there. In the cafeteria, we'll be doing some flooring there. Over towards the right of the screen, towards the bottom, you'll see those little circles. Those are the tables from the cafeterias that will be there. And we're just going to do some flooring in that area. In our library, which is up at the top, also, we'll be doing some painting. So you see the blue lockers there, you see a little yellow area, there's a drinking water area there, and there'll be some signs that we'll put out there for the library. Our goal is just to kind of really bring the area, continue to make it look really nice for our kiddos. So OE will certainly be having some painting. OP, we know will be having some painting. But I just wanted to share with you some of the little nice design that will be going in the OE area. Also, in terms of the playground, at the middle school, so at the top screen there, you can see the pieces that have been ordered, some of the swings that'll be there. There's some jungle gym areas also in that. And so we just want to let, you know, this is kind of like a little design of what it'll look like towards the back of the area. And at the primary school, we've ordered, as I shared with you at the last meeting, a couple of extra pieces. So we know we'll have a couple more kids during some of our cafeteria, our lunchtimes. We want to make sure that there's enough choice for every kid that's out there, every child. And so we did order those pieces, and that's kind of what that'll look like added on to the primary school's current playground area. Okay? All right. So the parking lot, you know that we're going to be going into the OP area and adding another parking lot towards the back of that building. Greg, you want to just kind of share a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, so when you look at the drawing, I mean, this is, you know, pretty detailed. But basically, the shaded area of blue is the additional parking that's being added. There's 36 spots there. It'll be added to the lot that currently exists there to the south. So you'll have a single row facing north, then you'll have a double row, then you'll have a single row that faces south. And this shows that in conjunction with all the contours, you can see the drainage just to the right there. That's where we had to make sure that it drained properly, so the area wouldn't be too wet. And this is part of what'll be sent out with the RFP package to the contractors, so they know exactly what's required.
So we're moving forward, and our goal is to, now that the school year is over, to really get the work started and done, basically. Okay? Again, our goal is to make sure that everything will be in place for our students as we begin the next school year. All right. So any questions on that at all tonight, board?
Just back to the parking lot. I still have a little bit of concern with having the cars mix in with the buses. Is there anything we can do to avoid that? I mean, when you've got people going over to WP, you've got the cars that are going to be mixing in with them buses. And I can just see, we're going to have seven extra buses there. Sometimes now, it gets pretty congested with the buses. Is there any way to just keep them from even going in that front parking lot in front of WP?
No. So we currently have cars that are over in that area. And actually, Dennis, I was there today, and I've been there the last couple of weeks to see how that's going. And we haven't had any difficulty. But what we will have in place next year to assist with that is some staff to help with directing the traffic, so that we can, you know, really eliminate or keep any confusion to really a minimum next year. So we believe, also, we're going to be staggering some of the time. So currently, in both of those schools, we have staggered times. So there is times when parents come, they actually come earlier than the time that the buses leave. They come a little bit early, they pick up the kids, and then most of the parents are gone before the buses actually have to leave. And that helps it to run extremely smooth in that area. So we'll be looking at the timing, we'll be looking at the staffing, and we'll be watching things very closely to make sure that we don't have any difficulty with that next year. Okay? All right. Greg, is there anything else you want to add?
No, just the fact that the new entrance way is going to be for staff and parent and car traffic. The existing entrance way is buses. So that in itself is going to help separate, and we don't have that separation currently. There will be, once, on the new entrance way, once you come up to the existing roadway that's there right by the backstop, there is a stretch there from there, going back to OP, where there will be, you know, cars and buses sharing that space. But that currently exists already. And if anything, I think having the new entrance way and separating the traffic before it hits the site is going to be very helpful. You know, and having the split bus plan. Right now, all the buses go to one building, drop off at the primary, and then go to the elementary. Next year, if you remember, the plan is they'll be split. So half will go one way, half will go the other, and then they'll cycle through to the other buildings. But I think having that separate entrance way done, this is really going to, you know, is it a perfect solution? I mean, you know, if you go to any school district in the morning or at dismissal time, you know, there's always some traffic issues. But I think it's based on the availability of the site, I think it's really going to give us the best.
All right. Sometimes it's hard to focus up here. I didn't say it earlier, but when people have side conversations in the audience, or blurt out things, it kind of disrupts a meeting. So please refrain from doing so. Thank you.
And as Superintendent said, we're going to, especially in the beginning of the year, have some staff there to help with the new traffic plan. We've got new signage ordered that will also help direct people where they need to go. And I think like anything else, once people get used to the system, you know, we anticipate it operating very smoothly.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So our goal again is to make sure that the work is all set for the next school year. So we will be working very diligently over the summer. Just a couple of things I also want to add, just to share tonight around Gannay, just for purposes of just knowledge purposes. So I'm not sure how many have seen the recent articles in the Democrat and Chronicle, just one out this past week. There is a concern. There are, as you know, several lawsuits that are in over the state. One of three lawsuits that was recently submitted, that was put into the legal system, had a hearing occurred earlier this week. The judge has said that he will kind of write his statement or write his comments, and then send that out to the general public. So we're waiting to see what that means. We're not sure where that's going to go. But that's the first of the three that has already started to proceed. Also, just so that you know, the New York State Legislature recently introduced three bills that could significantly alter the approved CES and ZEC program that's in place around that. And basically, what happens is, is that these bills seek to cap the actual cost of the ZEC program, which is a flowing of money that basically comes into Gannay. So if that cap stops, basically, the funding structure for the clean energy standard actually kind of becomes stalled. So Gannay would not get the funds that they are expecting to get. Some of those funds, major funds, from the state, basically. That's pretty much what it looks like. So we are monitoring this matter very closely, keeping in touch with the Vice President from Gannay, and just watching the news like everybody else is across the state. Just want to make sure that I shared that information with you all, basically. Tonight, in terms of the consent, excuse me, the board, what's wrong with that? Sorry, Amy must be doing away. Okay. So in terms of the board business, so we have a swimming team of one, the Greystone refund, and also, there's a special memorandum of agreement for your approval tonight. And then in terms of the consent agenda, we do have the treasurer's report, there's the personnel action, we have some resignations, some new hires, tenure appointments. There is one CPSC recommendation tonight for approval. There is the last Board of Education minutes, a gift. We have two scholarships that did come in that would need approval tonight. And then, of course, there is the budget transfer. Okay? Any questions at all from the board concerning our report? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, the board will move through the action items listed on our agenda. I need a motion to approve the swimming team of one with Ganado Central School District. Matt, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the Greystone tax refund. Pam, second. Ron, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the extension of Superintendent's contract. Jeremy, second. Ron, any discussion? Go ahead, Ron.
Along with the academic achievement that Business First released, they also released some other information that I think comes to bear on the superintendent and on his performance. They released school district funding, ending in 2015. Again, there are 431 districts in upstate New York. Victor was number two. They spent the second least money in the state of New York. Those of you who follow education know that a year ago, Victor voted to exceed the cap. They've been one of the, one of three districts in the Rochester area to try to exceed the cap. They've been the only one that was successful. Pellmac was 83rd in spending, Williamson was 109th, Wayne was 143 in spending. Ganado, by the way, was 184. Marion was 347. They spent more than 346 other districts in upstate New York on a per pupil basis. We also know, if you've been involved in education, there are two pretty good predictors of a student district, a school district's performance. One of those is the wealth of the district and the education of the district. Business First ranked 12 indicators of wealth, earning power, and educational attainment. They took the information from the five-year version of the Census Bureau's 2015 Community Survey, again, out of 431 districts. Pittsford was number one. Victor was 16. Fairport, 17. Penfield, 18. Webster was 32. Ganado was 66. Wayne was 89. So if we were living up to our predictions, we would be the 89th district in terms of achievement out of 431 upstate. We already know that we're in the top 100. Then they also looked at brain power. They looked at upstate communities with the most brain power for residents 25 or older, and this is also from the Census Bureau's 2015 Community Survey of 431 districts. Pittsford, again, number one. Penfield, 12. Fairport, 13. Victor, 26. Webster, 30. Canadega, 56. Ganado, 57. Wayne, 119. And then the other district in our area that was listed in the top 100 was Bloomfield. They were listed at 141. So when you look at what economics and what wealth and brain power indicators would do, gives you an idea where Wayne should be. And we're exceeding that. And I think that brings some information to bear on the Superintendent's contract and on the job he's done for Wayne Central. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, I'll add a few things. Nobody comes into a Superintendent's job and looks to cut budget, cut staff, close schools. That's not something you want to do. And we saw it in his entry plan. He was just looking at, he met with many people, worked with many people, and they told him many things. And then came up with a plan and saw a lot of things that needed to be done, and showed the leadership to do something, get some people in that would show what's up with it. With all the statistics we have, I mean, you can change statistics around, and heard conversations. And we've heard some, from some people, they say, "Don't extend the contract." And we hear from other people, they like what's been done with the budget, and that we can look at other salaries in the area, close in the area. Some of the schools are half our size, not even close. So, and we saw some of the salaries at local schools around here. So, I mean, we've made those comparisons. We're doing our homework. We look at our strategic plan, and we did nine goals, and we were congratulated by the guy that ran our strategic plan for us, that facilitated it, and was amazed at what we had done in a year with all the things that were going on. And I applaud him for what he's done. And I definitely think it's worthwhile to get a Superintendent that's willing to stay here and do the work and put the time in. Thank you. Carol?
Tim, I just want to say that, you know, I think our board goals over the last two years that we've met, we've asked him to look at different things. And like you said, it isn't anything that a Superintendent wants to do, close a school. But I believe that we did it with as much, at least angst as we could. It's never going to be easy. It's always going to be a hardship. I had a very hard day myself today, just knowing what was going on. It's, it's hard. But we have to live within our means, just like everybody else. And I think that our studies showed. And, you know, we've had a lot of input from the community, but a lot of that input, people, people didn't read the studies, and, or cherry picked different things. But when you looked at the whole study, I think we've done what we had to do. And, you know, Mathis has had a lot on his plate this year, and he's taken a lot of vilification. But with the strategic plan, with the things we've met, with our test scores over the last couple of years, and with everything else, I, I think, you know, one of the things that people complained about was, you know, he was going to come in, close the school, and move on. And he clearly wants to be here, to see us through. And he's, the biggest thing, too, is he's provided us with a budget, him and Greg, that if Gannay closes, we're going to still be okay. And that wasn't something that was ever looked at. And as far as his salary goes, I believe he started at $35,000 or $40,000 less than our previous Superintendent left at, with a lot less health insurance benefit than previous Superintendent. So I don't, I don't really think his salary is out of range for the size of our district.
Anybody else?
And again, I think the efficiencies that were done, where would we have been without them if we didn't get the leadership with coming up to budget time? We didn't cut programs. Some people will think that we do cut programs, or things been added. It's all out there. So, all right. Any other comments? All right. We're at the, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. All right, at this point, I need a motion to approve the agreement for Es creditario. Sorry if I mispronounced that. Carrie, second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. This time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do you have anything else you want to add on the consent agenda? Okay. Anybody, okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jeremy, second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Do we have any committee reports? Don't need any. We'll be starting it up again in September. All right. Board President comment? Just want to encourage everybody to complete that survey that you were sent, an email by NISBA, so that they have some information for us, that we evaluated things about ourselves, and use that at the retreat. So get that done. It was by June 27. And then they will, they will compile it and have information for us to use. And that's all I have there. Anybody need a motion to adjourn? Jeremy, second. Dennis? Any discussion? Dennis, thank you- Dennis, thank you for your service to the board. Sorry this is your last meeting, and all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.